convening a committee of the whole city council, March fourteenth, and ask for a roll call, please.
Jacobson, Finnukin.
Here.
Markhart.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Noriko.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. With that, I will turn to our first item of consideration, the STEAM Learning Center. I'll ask Assistant Manager Hop- or Assistant Manager Hoppenstett to introduce this topic, please.
Good evening, City Council and guests. STEAM Learning Center is an item that I will be discussing this evening with some team members who are also going to be presenting. So, just to give you a little bit of background, members of city staff have been exploring potential strategies for a one-of-a-kind collaboration to provide DeKalb with a community learning center. This learning center collaboration will provide hands-on, interactive experiences that explore science, technology, engineering, art, and math, which for short, I will call STEAM. As well as the history of the DeKalb community. The project team envisions a state-of-the-art learning center which will attract a wide cross-section of the population and will be a destination to bring visitors to DeKalb. The learning center will be a collaborative venture between the city of DeKalb, the Northern Illinois University Center for P-20 Engagement, and Prouly DeKalb, Inc., as well as the DeKalb Firefighters Historical Foundation. The vision for the STEAM Learning Center includes activities and opportunities for all ages to learn, play, and explore. The city's downtown is strongly preferred location for the STEAM Learning Center, but other locations will also be considered. And the learning center will include a variety of exhibits that demonstrate elements of STEAM and incorporate the city's rich history. Exhibits may include, but are not limited to, these are some of the project team ideas, such as hands-on activity spaces, medical, I'm sorry, media and technology labs, art space rooms, science classrooms, mock fire stations, a safety town which replicates a community and will help the children learn about safety, various historical fire engines and other equipment, and his history about policing, community jails, cells, things of that sort. Interactive public works and environmental exhibits would showcase the municipal services provided by the city. We would also bring in exhibits that are seasonal or traveling. And we would showcase things such as transportation, water, and obviously, the history of the airport, and other interesting municipal-type services, as well as the rich agricultural history of the city of DeKalb. So, the vision of STEAM Learning Center was developed by merging individual concepts from various key stakeholders. Each stakeholder has a seat at the table to ensure that their interest is fulfilled through a comprehensive and transformative learning center for the DeKalb community. As I mentioned, the stakeholders who are here tonight and will also present and tell a little bit about their involvement and the benefits to their involvement in the learning center. So, as I mentioned, NIU Center for P-20 Engagement, Prouly DeKalb, and the DeKalb Historical Firefighters Association will speak in a minute to inform you on their various interests. So, a couple of things to consider, there is definitely groundwork already established for a STEAM Community Learning Center. For instance, the City Center Plan. In July of 2013, the city council adopted and updated City Center Plan with the following vision. DeKalb City Center will be a regional destination for cultural, learning, dining, and entertainment, joined with a world-class university and surrounded by well-connected, desirable neighborhoods. The plan outlined a major strategy for achieving this vision, and that is greatly increase level of collaboration between the city and the university. The learning center is on track to be one of several downtown cornerstones for community learning and engagement, as already identified in the 2013 City Center Plan. Another groundwork piece and document, the city's strategic plan. Just recently, in February of this year, the city council adopted the DeKalb 2025 Strategic Plan, which really sets the direction for the city for policy, budgeting, and programming developments for the next ten years. An extensive community engagement, as you all know, was conducted to capture the opinions and ideas of the community for the future of DeKalb from people who not only live in DeKalb, but work and learn in the city. The STEAM Learning Center is going to fulfill the community's needs as identified by the community and captured within the strategic plan. In the plan's specifically two visions, vision of sense of place and vision of community vitality in a vibrant downtown. These visions outline the need of providing a broad spectrum of enjoyable activities and entertaining events as essential for attracting and retaining residents and drawing visitors to the city. The community described through the various engagements that were done with community members, elements of community vitality as a strong business community, a thriving downtown, a rich array of cultural and recreational activities for people of all ages, and a flourishing natural environment. So, specifically, the strategic plan identifies support for establishment of a regional technology, art, and cultural children's learning space, and support for placemaking in DeKalb neighborhoods downtown and entrance ways, the airport and the NIU campus. So, in addition to the strategic plan, also, America's Best Communities grant application as one of their seven initiatives through the America's Best Community and Prouly DeKalb, Inc. collaboration describes as one of their initiatives that a smart space learning center is one of the cornerstone projects for community revitalization. So, we have identified already as a city, the need in the background for this sort of concept to retain residents, revitalize our downtown, and to draw people as a destination here in the city of DeKalb. So, let me transition now to members of the project team, and I'll start with Marilyn and Patty from NIU P-20 Engagement. And then, at the conclusion, I will circle back and end with next steps.
Thank you Patty, and thank you Mayor Ray and members of the council. We're looking forward to sharing with you the concept of smart space as part of the STEAM Learning Center. The Center for P-20 Engagement, the sponsor of the smart space portion of this proposal, manages off-campus activities with partners in communities and multiple partners from across the campus. We have three areas of practice, STEAM Works, that's our science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics practitioners. They work with schools, parks, and libraries, everywhere from Chicago over on Lake Michigan, out to Freeport and Fulton on the Mississippi River. So, throughout the area, the Center for P-20 Engagement, which we call the P-20 Center, is at work. We also do professional development for educators, and we work to improve college and career readiness. By the way, P-20 refers to preschool through graduate school or lifelong learning, and we really work with people of all ages, and we intend the STEAM Learning Center to serve people of all ages. Last year, the P-20 Center engaged about seventy-three thousand people in school presentations, at parks and libraries. STEM Fest is our big event every fall at the Convo Center, get a huge crowd for that. We engage P-12 students, teachers, community members, a lot of NIU students as volunteers. About two-hundred-and-eighty NIU faculty members were involved in our activities last year, and we have worked extensively with District 428, including this afternoon and yesterday and all much of last week. Done work at Hopkins Park with the DeKalb Library, and of course, at NIU. The STEAM Learning Center initiative, we began thinking about in 2012. We began planning at that time, and that's just the members of the P-20 Center staff. In 2014, we teamed up with the library, D. Hoover was a wonderful partner and continues to be, and with the city and the Egyptian Theater to make a proposal to the Kresge Foundation to form what we called Library Square. Be kind of a triangle with the library, a building we were trying to get into downtown, and the Egyptian Theater with a sculpture park in the middle. Wonderful idea, the Kresge Foundation said we just weren't quite aligned with their expectations. So, that didn't go through, but the process was excellent, and we learned a lot about each other. Then, in 2015, we began working much more closely with the city and the Firefighters Association because there were similarities in our concepts, and we saw a lot of possibility for collaboration. We're very proud to have been included in the Prouly DeKalb ABC presentation, their application, as a key part of that proposal. There are many kinds of things that might happen at Smart Space and at the rest of the STEAM Learning Center, and Patty Severt is going to tell you about those. Patty, I don't think we have the right pictures, but we're going to stick with them anyway, okay? And will you talk about, I'm going to go back, are they? Okay, I'm going to go back and let you talk about the activities that might go on in Smart Space when you walked in the door, what would happen?
Okay, thank you Marilyn. All right, I think we'll let, go ahead and let the slides play. I thought we might have our NIU slides first, but that's okay, they're mixed together. My name's Patty Severt, I'm the Director STEM Outreach at NIU. STEM is a big part of STEAM Works and the P-20 Center. And I'm wearing our signature tie-dyed lab coat today, so if you go home and ask your kids, have you seen the STEM people in the tie-dyed lab coats? Either at Corn Fest, STEM Fest, or in the classroom, that's me and my, my, well, she would call herself a minion, but my colleague, Petey and Jeremy. Anyway, as Marilyn, okay, all right, sorry. Anyways, Marilyn said, in 2012, at one of our meetings, we talked about what would we do if we really could do something really critical for the community, and a lot of us started out with, well, a children's museum, Makerspace, and you know, there's, you get fired up about these ideas, but at the time, it was not something that seemed possible. But in 2013, one of our colleagues said to me, Patty, you've got to come downtown, they're talking about a children's museum. And it was this planning process, and so, we started to get a feeling that this actually might be possible, and we started to take a closer look and to start to dream. And so, I want to share with you a little bit about our dream, our vision. As Marilyn said, and Patty said, we need to be working all of this together, weaving this together with the vision of the city and of the firefighters. But I'm going to share with you, well, my personal vision based on what the P-20 Center group has pulled together. So, I want to take you on a walk through the STEAM Learning Center. As we come in the entrance, we see a large, open lobby. Off to one side, you might see classrooms unlike any you've seen in a school nearby. There may be students doing art projects or others doing electronics. As we come up to the desk, the ticket counter, behind that, you'll see the store. The museum store or the Learning Center store will have valuable learning tools for our community's children, but also will have supplies for the Makerspace so that students, teens, adults who want to be working in the Makerspace will not have to wait and go online and order things, they will be here, right here, they can get at them immediately. As we walk past this area, out of the lobby into the great hall, we're going to find what you would most likely think of when you think of a children's museum. The hands-on, interactive spaces, there'll be mirrors and magnets and pulleys and all sorts of things that the, that children can get into. We talked about a grocery store where kids could learn how to, how economics works and about food. And then, we said, a grocery store doesn't do it for DeKalb, we need a farmer's market, a farmer's market. We can tie it into the local food, the local foods initiative in the area. As we pass through this area with the larger exhibits, we may see off to the side, the computers. It might look like an arcade where the students are student, I want to call them students because when we go into the school, we work with students, but where the teens or the children are playing computer games. The teens may actually be learning and studying for the ACT math test while they're fighting zombies. That's one of the educational programs we already have. As we walk through this area, we're going into an area with classrooms, and not just any classrooms. We envision a fully-equipped science laboratory where we can do professional development with area teachers and introduce them to the newest technology that they can use in the classroom. And not just the technology, but we do professional development to get teachers aligned with a national, the new next-generation science standards in how to engage students through the engineering process and the new way of looking at the scientific processes. Then, as we move on, there'll be an art studio, a high-tech computer lab where the students can make and edit their own computer games, perhaps a green screen and audio studio where the, where community members can make their own programs. As we get further into this building, we come to my favorite part, the Makerspace. I don't envision a single Makerspace, we want to be a learning area for all ages. So, we'll have a learning space for the small children to learn how to use tools. We're seeing too many kids actually arrive at NIU without ever having used a hammer or screwdriver or drill. Next to that, perhaps through glass walls or large windows, those young children could be observing older students or teens or adults, learning how to program Arduinos or use computer-aided design and 3D printers and laser cutters to build additional things, more interesting, larger things. That would be connected with our shop for building our exhibits at the Learning Center. As we, as we, as I pull you out of the Makerspaces, or maybe you pull me out because that's my favorite place, we're going to go outside and take a look at the raised bed gardens, the musical instruments that are permanently installed outside, or perhaps a sculpture garden, or a water play area. As we go through all of these spaces, we're going to see community volunteers and NIU students working together to make this place a wonderful learning experience for everyone who comes through. Thank you.
We're going to turn the clicker over to Luke from the firefighters. You can see, we've become very excited about this concept. It's been a dream for years, and we continue to develop it. Now, with the support of the firefighters and their interest in the city and Prouly DeKalb, there are possibilities that this could really happen here. It's not going to happen with university funding, we know that, we have never planned on that, but we have, Patty will tell you about what we see as next steps.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm Todd Stofa with the Fire Department, I'm a lieutenant with the Fire Department. Getting ready to start my eighteenth year, I am also the president of the DeKalb Firefighters Historical Foundation. Sitting here, we got Adam Miller, he's our Secretary Treasurer, and Luke Hawison on the board. So, where does our history begin and how do we fit into this? Obviously, our history as a fire department starts in eighteen sixty-nine. We are deep and ingrained in the history of this town, and we take pride in that. In about two thousand and four, core group of members of the Fire Department started, we actually discovered cases of memorabilia from all over, ranging in history. We started looking at the history of the department, much of us, many of us younger members at that time, and really started to learn key parts of the history of this town and how the face of the Fire Department has changed and kind of goes hand-in-hand with how this town has changed. So, we started looking at that. We really started to collect and preserve some of that, didn't want anything to happen to it. So, we started thinking of ideas and thought, wow, wouldn't it be great to have a museum to showcase all of this history at some time? We started thinking of ideas, looking at different concepts and dreaming, basically, and we started putting some of those ideas together. And around two thousand and twelve, about eighty members, retirees, active members, a few community members got together, and we decided to organize the DeKalb Firefighters Historical Foundation in dreams of one day opening a fire museum. What have we been working on? We are currently a five oh one C three charitable organization through the IRS. We've had a few fundraisers, most notably our Pancake Breakfast that many of you have been to at the fire station, and we've co-hosted that with the Fire Department and Chief Hicks, and made that a fire prevention week to also reach out to the community. In two thousand and thirteen, the foundation acquired a nineteen fifty-one Mack Fire Engine that was original to the Fire Department from the city of DeKalb. Mr. Kyler from Malta, Illinois, we found out he still had and possessed that, and it's original. We've got that up and running, we've attended several parades, most notably Memorial Day Parade here, with our members and our families. And as you folks know, ladder trucks are a big issue in this town currently, and we are working with Chief Hicks. Chief Hicks currently owns the original ladder truck from nineteen twenty-nine from the city of DeKalb. We're working to get that back, we would like to get that into our museum at some point, thank you Chief, along with three or four other fire engines that we've researched that are original to the city of DeKalb that are still somewhat local, that we'd love to have back at some point. So, we're going to continue our fundraising efforts and look at the big plan here for a fire museum. Unfortunately, through research, we found that a fire museum to sustain and operate on our own is a hard task to accomplish. We started talking to city managers a few years ago about this dream, reality, and they pointed us in the direction of this STEAM Center. Once we learned about it and found out some of the information, we realized that this was a perfect fit for us, something we wanted to be part of. So, that's where we are today. Not sure what happened to our slides up there, but, were they? Oh, perfect. So, what does the fire museum have to offer? Not only is it a showcase of our history, but we want it to be a public education center for the citizens of this town, most notably, the younger folks. When the recession and hard times hit, it affected the Fire Department much like everybody else, and we do not get a chance to get out to the schools very often anymore and work with the children of the community. That's one thing that the firemen hold very heartfelt. We want to get out and work with the community and teach kids about fire safety and safety in general, whether it's railroad tracks, a Safety Town exhibit, which you're going to see some of these slides going through here, as far as street safety, exit drills in the home, kitchen fire safety, severe weather, and general home safety. Some of those things are what we envision this museum to offer. We've looked at different ideas as far as partnering with other entities, the police department, the railroad, NICOR, electrical safety, any of those that would fit along with us, we would love to see as part of this. Also, like I said, the fire museum would offer a showcase of our histories. You can see some of the slides that are circling through here, a lot of these things play a key part in the history of this town. We want that to be seen for our residents and also as an attraction for residents from other communities to come to. Currently, most notably, most residents here and their families travel to Rockford or to Naperville to children's museums. We want to turn that around and have this be a showcase of our community. So, that's a quick, brief synopsis of what we have to offer and our dream and our goal. We are always open for discussion and ideas and questions, if anybody has any. So, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Brett Brown.
How are you? Can you hear me okay? Last time I was here, I didn't do so well with a microphone. Well, my name is Brett Brown, and I am a volunteer with Prouly DeKalb. And I'm here today because Prouly DeKalb supports- And I'm here today because Proudly Decalb supports the effort of the city and NIU to make the Smart Space Learning Center and their, and the fire museum a reality. I'm supposed to tell you a little bit about Proudly Decalb and what it is, and I think that most of you do know, but for those watching on the TV at home, maybe they don't. Proudly Decalb is two things. Proudly Decalb, one, as you've seen in some of the pictures that have gone by, is a local communications effort. It's a grassroots effort to get the word out about all of the good things that are going on in Decalb. We think there's plenty of avenues for the other, and it's time to have one for the positive. The other thing Proudly Decalb is, is it's the working name of a group of volunteers that have been pursuing a community revitalization grant in Frontier Communications America's Best Communities Competition. And we have been able to move with the support of NIU, with city, and with grassroots volunteers from different sectors of the city, into the round of 15. We've become a national semifinalist in a competition that may bring somewhere between a million and $3 million to, to the community. And that would be money that would be spent as the community directed. It would be volunteer-based, and the volunteers are working on refining the ideas of how an investment of that magnitude could be best made on behalf of the community. So we are hoping to move on to the round of eight, the finalist round, that happens in April. Group of volunteers will go to North Carolina and we will, we'll make presentations to a panel of judges and try to convince them that we are worthy to, to move on. And I would say that at this point, we're getting tremendous support from the community, from the city and from NIU, and particularly from our other educational institutions, Kewahke College District 428. The response has been outstanding. So that's a little bit about Proudly Decalb. I think people have the idea of what we're doing. We do have seven projects. We did identify the STEAM Smart Space Learning Center as one of those projects because we recognized that it was something that was already going on. It was an asset, a clear asset to the community if it can land here. And we see part of our main role, sorry, I'm backing away from that microphone again, we say part of our main role is to see that it lands in Decalb. A Smart Space Center could land in a lot of places, and I use a big institution. We'd like to bring it home, and we'd like to see it occupy some space in downtown Decalb. From within the group, within the Proudly Decalb group, we, we particularly like, like to see it land in some space that's underutilized now. Empty space or space that may not up to its potential. Love the idea of having them combine the uses between the Smart Space and the, and the museum. And another role that we have is, it's possible that one of our other seven projects could co-locate with that. Of the seven things that we are doing, four of them probably have potential for place-based or space utilization in downtown Decalb. There's a co-working space, there's an incubator project that we'd like to have, there's a food hub. Dan Kenny's worked on the food hub and it involves a commercial kitchen. It may involve a year-round grocery, fresh fruits, fresh foods, grocery. All projects that we think would have a, a great place in our downtown. So that's how they connect, I, somewhat specifically, I'd say overall, that our seven projects from Proudly Decalb are starting to coalesce around the ideas of a culture of innovation and entrepreneurship, those two big ideas. And as far as innovation goes, we can't think of anything better probably than these activities to represent to the outside world, some of the best things that are going on and some of the creativity that we have here. So we are happy to be part of the RFP process. We look forward to getting back some expert opinion on good locations and the financial feasibility of running these projects. And when that information comes in, we hope to play a role in, on behalf of the community in where those things go. And that's what I have.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your section. So, next steps. The project team has identified that the next step in the concept development for the STEAM Learning Center is to rely on the expertise of a, of a consultant to analyze the feasibility of this vision. The consultant will make recommendations regarding the steps that will lead to the Learning Center's creation, and specific deliverables and items from the consultant to be analyzed will be detailed in the request for proposal. The project team would like the consultant's expertise to explore the potential of the Learning Center, what resources, support will be needed for the success of this space, the feasibility of this space, what's the ownership or operating model best suited for the Learning Center now and in the future? So we'd be looking for guidance for design, cost, financial impact, construction, operations, funding, and all of those key elements that would really make this a potential and a success for today and in the future. So the planning process has been very collaborative so far and very productive, and the project team looks forward to providing more specific information as it's finalized. And at this point, the team appreciates any feedback from the city council as far as the planning process as well as the next steps and for the RFP. The project team will come forward with the request for proposal for city council review and approval, and we look forward to that opportunity. So again, the purpose of today was to introduce this vision that has been very collaborative, collaborative so far, and look forward to bringing forward the RFP and hopefully council approval to go out for a request for proposal.
Thank you, Patty. I'd like to initially ask council and the gallery to join me in applauding the team behind the STEAM Center. I'd like to compliment all three parties on their part in this collaboration and city staff for participating in the collaboration as well. At this point, are there specific questions for Patty or the STEAM Center team? Alderman, Noriko.
I think the concept is wonderful and I'm thrilled it's gotten to this point. I would encourage the group to plan the space so that it could be used by as wide an age span as possible, perhaps some intergenerational activities. I think that will appeal to the wider community as well, but I think you've made a wonderful start.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion? Alderman, Snow.
I think it's an exciting concept. Being old enough to now have grandchildren in, in other states, quite often we go visit them. We go to museums, learning centers, libraries, activity centers. I mean, that, that's, that's what's out there. And I think the downtown Decalb is not going to be the shopping Mecca anymore, but maybe there'll be some boutique stores. But I think museum, shopping, learning centers, activity centers is kind of the wave of the future. I've seen that in, in places I've gone to, and I think it's an exciting concept that we should try in Decalb.
Excellent. And then it occurs to me that the STEAM Center concept certainly complements the library expansion that has occurred recently. It becomes an integral part of those offerings in our community.
Absolutely. It would definitely build on the fabulous technology and innovation of the Decalb Public Library.
Thank you. Other comments? Seeing none, I'll thank the group for the presentation this evening and wish you success in the endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to our next item, Federal Emergency Management Agency's National Flood Insurance Program: Community Rating System Class Rating Increase. I'll turn to our Public Works Director, Tim Holdeman, to introduce this topic.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I'll just turn it over to John, he has the presentation.
It's not an engineering presentation without boards and stuff, so. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'd just be happy to announce that the city of Decalb has advanced the status in the community rating system from a class eight to a class seven. And the reason that's important is because that directly affects the premiums which our residents are paying on their flood insurance policies. So by increasing our status in this program from a class eight to a class seven, we've increased the discount from a 10% discount to a 15% discount for all the residents in town that are required to have a flood insurance policy. So that totals 97,000, or excuse me, 97 policies throughout the city, and the average policy holder, they'll, their, their savings could be around $243. So that started in October of 2015. So as a policy owner's policy comes up for renewal, they'll realize that, that discount at that time. And if any citizens out there have any questions about the program or flood insurance in general, please contact me in Engineering Division. And as a part of that, that class increase, we've been awarded a plaque by FEMA in recognition of our status increase, and I'd just like to present that to the Mayor and City Council at this time.
Thank you, Tim, very much. Jen, I'd be interested in what was involved from the city's standpoint in this increase?
Sure. The, the, the effort surrounded a lot, a lot of the work was information that we had in the city already. For example, this exhibit to my left is a, is a map of the floodplain throughout the city. We didn't have that in GIS or a digital image of it before. As a part of this initiative, we, we requested the data from the Decalb County, who sent it over to the city of Decalb. And on this plant, on this exhibit here in purple is the floodway, and then outside of the floodway is the floodplain, and then outside of that is the 500-year flood. So you're going to see a deep purple, a light purple, and then straddled by a green on that exhibit there. And by participating in a variety of activities, we're allowed, we're able to increase our status in this program. There's no capital input required from the city. It's just an undertaking of a lot of outreach techniques, informing those in the floodplain that they are there and allowing, or informing them that we are a resource that they can use if they have any questions on how to better flood-proof their house, what they have to do if they want to put, say, you know, a shed in your backyard, do you really want to have it in the floodplain where it could, could be flooded in the future? So a lot of it's outreach, a lot of it is floodplain management, and a lot of it was just data collection. So Michael Balling is going to be the project, the project implementation engineer in our office is going to, has set for his Certified Floodplane Manager certification, so he's going to be, hopefully, we're getting good results on that exam in the future, and that's going to also contribute to the, the, the points that can, we can receive for different activities.
Excellent. And you indicated the, the result of this FEMA National Flood Insurance Program is a reduced rate to our 97 residents that may have flood insurance.
That's correct.
Very good. All right, thank you. Questions of John at this point? Alderman, Noriko.
What would the city have to do to move from seven to six?
There's a large manual, the CRS manual, that outlines the different activities that we can undertake. So a lot of the way we approach the, the program is to see where we're going to get the most bang for our buck. So if there's activities that we're already doing, we pursue those first. If there's activities that take slightly less staff time, but we may realize a lot of points for them, we'll undertake those next. So an example of one of the activities could be a citywide storm, stormwater and floodplain management plan or something like that would, would gain us more points.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none? Thank you, Jen. City manager, do you wish to move to executive session?
Yes.
Okay. I would then entertain a motion to move to executive session to discuss personnel as provided for in 5IL CS 120/2C1. The purchase or lease of real property is provided for in 5IL CS 120/2C5. And litigation is provided for in 5IL CS 120/2C11. Is there a motion?
I saw move.
Moved by Alderman, favor. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman, Nukin? Roll call.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Nukin?
Yes.
Markford?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Ring?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll use the large conference room?